...firms that provided responses. At the beginning of September, Committee of People listened to presentations from those firms last week and are in the process of determining who they might recommend to the board as an architect to provide an initial round of designs of a possible future senior center. So that's the point at which the future potential senior center is. And if anybody's got any questions about that one, I'd be happy to try to.
So the Senior Citizens Center is just part of a larger plan, my understanding of that? I mean, you talked about the gymnasium here, I mean, a larger community space.
So the future senior center is a senior center, but there is the potential to have a community gymnasium as part of that project. The exercise has been one of the, I shouldn't say one of the, probably the biggest growth area for the senior center over the last several years. We know that we need to have active exercise spaces in a future building. And so if the potential exists to make some of those spaces available to community members when they're not being used by the senior center, that would be a real win-win situation. So that's why, that's there. There was also a survey done of community members that reached out through the school district. So it wasn't just Village of Oregon people, but there was a survey done. Over 800 responses from community members where they were asked, "Are you interested in using a community gymnasium if one is constructed? What features would you want it to have? What would be the way you would like to use it? Do you have people in your family who are involved in rec sports that are struggling to find spaces to hold those things?" And so about 84%, I think, of the respondents to that survey indicated that yes, that's an amenity that they would like to have available. And there were some questions about memberships in something like that. So, yeah. You're welcome.
Rachel, you just mentioned that that was a broader reach survey that gathered up 825 people. Was that a school district sponsored survey? So did it go out under the guise of the school district or under the guise of the senior center?
It went out under, well, the school district continuing education department provided the link to that to their email list, but it was not a school district survey. No.
Oh, okay. It just provided a broader reach.
Right. We wanted to, we wanted to reach to people who might not be thinking about the fact that they might have an interest in a new senior center building.
And do we have a sense of what percentage of those respondents, those 825, were Village of Oregon? Do we have any demographics associated with that 825 people?
Yes, we do, but I do not have them in my head right now. But yes, we have age, age ranges, family size ranges, where people live. So, yeah, all of those demographics were part of that.
Does the senior center currently use any of the school district properties for any other programs?
No. No.
Is that something that's been investigated, as far as you know?
To the best of my knowledge, there's not. The district, the school district seems to be without ample space to allow that to happen.
You have, excuse me, there's been talk on the downtown plan. Is this part of that process? Or how is that part, this seems to be very separate.
I think the two ultimately will be dovetailed together. I think that the downtown master plan is supposed to be coming together late this year. And I think that whatever happens with a future senior center will certainly be part of, or the downtown master plan will certainly be taken into consideration. So I don't know if anybody in the village has anything else they want to offer to that, but I don't think that, I don't think that this is a project that exists separate and distinct from the downtown master plan.
Any other questions about the building project? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item 2C. Reaccreditation of Oregon Area Senior Center through Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers.
Every five years for the last 30 years, the Oregon Area Senior Center has gone through the process of being accredited by the Wisconsin Association of Senior Centers. And we just completed that again this year. It is not an easy process to complete, or I should say, the standards to meet those requirements are not necessarily easy to achieve. There, one thing I did not include in the memo about the reaccreditation is that only about a quarter of the senior centers in the state are accredited. In Dane County, we have, we are lucky to have Fitchburg, Middleton, Stoughton, Sun Prairie, and Oregon. So we have five accredited senior centers in Dane County, which is about a fifth of all of the accredited centers in the state. It, being accredited just requires us to demonstrate that we're meeting the highest standards for providing services to older adults in our communities. It forces us to go back and reassess regularly what all of our policies and procedures are, to look at whether we are serving the neediest people in our districts to the best that we can. It forces us to address issues that have come up in the last five years. So, for example, social isolation became quite an issue since we were last accredited five years ago because COVID happened and people got really isolated. And the standards for addressing some of that isolation have changed. And so if you go through the reaccreditation process, it forces you to stay current and to, and to stay at the forefront. So I would like to not only compliment the staff, but also the committee of volunteers that helped us to get through this process. And they were council on aging members, Clarice Dewey, who's here tonight. Thank you, Clarice. Marilyn Redman, and Sue McCallum. And they all invested a lot of hours to help us go through the process of reviewing and updating all the things that needed to be updated.
Congratulations. That is a lot of work. I was on, want to help Stoughton go through that process. And your volunteers really put a lot of effort in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to phase two of the meeting. Oregon Area Fire Department District, we will call to order, Jason Yelich, your call.
Yep.
Tim Higgins.
Here.
Steve Jernigan.
Here.
Kent Knudsen.
Here.
And Jason Manke and Jeff Hodgson.
Here.
And thank you very much also for the gentleman sitting in the back row there for attending tonight's meeting. Thank you very much for all your work and everything you do. We'll move on to item four, business items for discussion or possible action. A, review 2024 budget performance and curves. I'm pretty sure you have a copy of that. Any immediate questions, comments before we go into some detail? Hearing none.
So basically, it's a snapshot of where we are, where currently we are here. You can see that we're at, what, 66% or 62% or depending on which line we're looking at here. And basically, we have went through about 75% of the year. So our numbers look in good position where I currently keep in mind. There's always those wild cards, like I remind the commission, and you've probably heard me speak other years, that there's some repairs or something here or there that could happen. The good news is that I keep, I keep trying to remind people of certain things. When Kent came on, the commission, a couple of years ago, he said, "Fire chief, what, what is our debt of the fire station? What's our debt of apparatus and all that kind of stuff?" And the answer to that question is basically, all of our equipment, all of our buildings are paid for, and it's this operating budget, the stuff that we buy, we purchase each and every year. But the rest of our stuff is all paid for and all basically being maintained. So that's the good news, so, on that particular event. But otherwise, unless something really, really happened, we should again be fine and we should have another successful year in fill as far as keeping the budget in the black since Atlanta has been here. So I think that is, that's pretty darn good.
Yep.
So thanks to all the commissioners and all the folks making it happen over the years. Any questions? Do you have anything to add, Mr. Berman, Captain Berman? You want to, you want to tell the group? I think it's probably noteworthy to say that Gene's been here with the district for a long time. First and foremost, he said, he looked at these numbers a few weeks ago and he comes in and he says to me, "Fire chief, remind everybody how much money have we spent and what we saved over the years by doing some of the, some of our purchases accordingly." So, Gene, I don't want to take your words.
So probably within the last seven years, we've, the last three vehicles we bought have been used. So if you take engine two, we bought six years ago. If we go buy that brand new, that would've been $900,000. I'm pretty sure we paid, what, $250?
$170.
$170 for that one. And then the tender, we've gone to the demo. We'd have bought that brand new, that would've been $600,000. Hundred and seventy for that one. And then the tender, we've gone to the demo, we'd have bought that brand new, that would have been six hundred thousand. We paid.
About two and a quarter, I think it was.
Two and a quarter for that one. And this year here, we're looking at a different squad and Casey and myself found one down in New Mexico. With five, with five thousand miles on it. So we sweet talked the chief there and said, well, let's, let's pursue it. So we did. If we'd spec out a new one, that'd be a million dollars. We paid two.
Oh, I think it was a little bit more than that, Gene. I think it was at two eighty-two and then we had some other upgrades and everything else. So we'll have four hundred thousand when we're done, but still a far cry of a million dollars.
So I mean, we're, we're not out to buy new equipment. There's a lot of used stuff out there that's in excellent shape. So we're doing all we can to save every dent. But, and if we go spec out a new squad, it would cost us a million dollars and it takes thirty-six months to have it filled. And you have to pay when you sign the contract. So your money is their money for thirty-six months. And that's the way it's getting to be. If you want a ladder truck, that's going to be over two million dollars now. And that's thirty-six to forty months old. So you give them two million dollars for forty months, you know? You give me four.
The numbers add up very fast. So.
But that's the way the process is now. Before you only had to give a third down and then you paid the rest on completion. Now they want your money off. So that's just an idea of what we've been doing. We've been saving by buying used in there. Like that squad, there's, it's all aluminum. Of course, in New Mexico, you don't have any salt, no snow. So you just got to keep your eyes open and watch.
So as we, we tell that group there and we thank them for the, for their homework and everything else, it took, it took a while. It probably took seven, eight months to do all that stuff, but greatly appreciated and bringing those projects together and saving us on that end. So that we can put the men and women in the field that we need and try to increase our wages and make that part of the operational, really work for this, for the fire district. Those are, are the keys. So going back to your numbers, Jeff, where we are currently, unless Lisa sees something from the finance department of our current budget, I think we're in good shape and we can move forward. Concur? Good. Thank you for giving that.
I have a question on the FEMA grant.
Yes, sir.
Why, why is that in there? How do we get it? Where'd it come from?
Yep. So the FEMA grant, that was an application that we put in a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago. That's a four-year grant. That's about fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand that's coming in. Basically for recruitment retention, for marketing, to bring more people into our operation, that kind of stuff. And to offset some of our costs with our part-time people that are out there. So some of that money is basically trickling back into the budget in different areas, that kind of thing, to help supplement that stuff for the next four years. And it was an application process that we put in and we were successfully getting.
Fifty-nine thousand per year for four years or fifty-nine thousand total?
Fifty-nine thousand per year for four years. And it was just a couple of dollars short of two hundred and fifty thousand, is that what you call it?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the board for the support. So, and you see Jess Burger back there from the MS division and all the people that put that, that narrative because getting federal dollars is tough.
It's very competitive.
Very competitive. So.
Any other comments, questions about their current performance? Hearing now, we'll move on to item four B, review draft 2025 budget and capital improvement plan.
Okay, Jeff says, Fire Chief, go ahead and talk. So this is basically kind of a repeat of our July meeting. Our capital plan is basically purchasing a new ambulance that we will order very shortly, take place. This goes, all goes through December of twenty-five. Next year it will be here. Again, like you heard Gene talking before, it just takes a long time to do it. It's a fossil fuel diesel engine. On a Deamer's rig that we have proposed out there, went through the bid process, everything else, that we will be moving towards making that happen. And then the only other thing that basically part of that capital improvement plan was twenty thousand that we also have into the building, that we put back into the building. We started that probably back in sixteen or so, Phil. And I recommended that to the group. We have some dollars to be able to take care of some of the repairs and upgrade that building, that twenty-three-year-old building that we currently have and can do, and do that. And then there was a hundred thousand that was in, that was put in by the board and the commission back in July for any future help with any plans or other stuff that'd be put together for any future add-on to the fire station or any new fire station planning, that kind of stuff. That all has, that part of it has to be approved by, of course, by the commission that has the final say on how that moves forward and all that kind of stuff. But otherwise, there is nothing else that has changed in there or anything else. I will also add that a few Fridays ago, myself, Martin, and I think every township was there, as I recall, had a little pre-meeting for this meeting, you could say, that we talked about the revenue and how we look at, talking about levying. We had some good discussion. We talked about some long-term planning, positives, negatives, all of the different things that we are looking at for the future and how we wanted to manage and run this fire district. Basically, the consensus of all those folks at that particular day was to max out the levy limits. Martin and Lisa basically looked at that. The numbers just came in basically twenty-four, thirty-six hours ago. Those numbers were put together. Martin and Lisa put those documents out to you, that kind of stuff, kind of. Instead of spending about three hundred and some thousand dollars worth of fund balance, it's about eighteen thousand dollars less there of fund balance to balance next year's budget, to make it happen with what's approved or proposal on paper, to move that forward. And, you know, that's pretty much where we are. Nothing else has really changed. And those documents were put together and sent out within, again, the last twenty-four hours or so. Is where we currently are.
So some of the money in that future facility planning, that hundred thousand, the first part would be looking at what the fire department and EMS might need for sports.
Well, correct. I mean, you'd be looking at, there's, again, going, going back to that hundred thousand, because that's a lot. Again, there's a lot of discussion on that end. Do we need that hundred thousand or not next year and that kind of thing? I think that's where it comes down to. Because that was not necessarily in the Fire Chief's budget that was put forward. The district looked at that and, and the commission members looked at that and thought it was probably something to have, have some money set aside to be able to move forward. When and if we need to do some, any needs analysis or any plans or anything else. As we get down the agenda later in here, of course, we had some, you know, the downtown study that Arlen talked about here. That group was here with the district a few weeks ago. We went through that. Of course, the fire district is eagerly waiting to see what happens with any possible, you know, the old, the old village hall downtown to see what that looks like and see what other opportunities are for the fire district to stay at its current location downtown, which, again, we've heard pros, cons, all the, all that other kind of stuff. And we'll just kind of, we'll play that out as it goes. But the hundred thousand is there when and if something is determined by the commission to be able to move forward and help the Fire Chief, as the commission would like to see the Fire Chief having some help, drawing some plans and moving that process forward.
Thank you.
So the town of Oregon has had a lot of discussion about this hundred thousand dollars. And we continue to hear that the actual expense is forty or fifty thousand dollars. And I don't understand why there needs to be a hundred in that budget for this next year. There's also some, I, I have still some confusion on whether or not that's a base building number or not. Is that a base building number when we, when it comes down to our budget for next year? Is a hundred thousand dollars or whatever the expense is? Because it's my understanding it's up to a hundred thousand dollars. Is that a base building number for next year? For my own edification? That's a question.
I would say it's a base building number.
So, no, so a base building number, you're talking about a number that then next year would be kind of pre-established and you'd rise from there.
I see what you're talking about.
Yes, exactly.
So this is in the capital.
This is in the capital plan.
So it wouldn't be a recurring.
It would not be.
I just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
It would not be. It's in the capital plan for next year. It is not a base building number.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that.
Thanks for the clarification, Carl.
And so back to my initial question. I've, I've heard that it's a forty or fifty thousand dollar exercise to get the kind of space planning we're looking for. Why do we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget?
Question members, help the Fire Chief.
I, I think it was, go ahead. We don't know what it's going to cost because we don't know what the exercise is yet in terms of, we know we need more training space. We don't know how much training space. We know we need more sleeping space. We don't know how much sleeping space. We know that we need more apparatus space. We know that we need a solution for when the ladder truck comes. And so the project has the potential to be pretty broad in scope in terms of analyzing what best serves the fire district for the next fifteen years. And we wanted to make sure there was enough in the budget to cover a comprehensive study that will give us the answers we need to come up with a solid plan going forward.
Was the district assuming a single point, let's say consultant, let's say consultant firm, whatever, or multiple based on what each part of the analysis? Because if, if it were a single, then, you know, there's, there's some, there's some universe of, of firms that can provide that service. And I would think that a preliminary call or, or two or three would get down to a number that says, okay, it's a hundred thousand. Or it's not a hundred thousand, it's forty-five thousand or something like that. Is that, is that reality or is that not really reality?
The reality is, yeah, broad spectrum. I think Martin and I had some conversations on some future projects, as the projects of the village had. And then I looked at some of the counterparts of the fire districts and some fire operations throughout the state of Wisconsin. I think Martin sells some stuff basically in the forty, fifty thousand dollar category. Some of the stuff on the fire and EMS side and the people that I've talked to, basically throughout the state of Wisconsin, forty, fifty thousand, sixty thousand is not going to cover it. I mentioned that to the board. It is going to probably be someplace between, again, we're throwing numbers out there, Carl, because the RFP hasn't been put out there and this hasn't been totally identified. It's probably going to be someplace between sixty and a hundred thousand. I don't know. I don't know. And that's, that's the reality.
And I don't know if you've heard tonight, we don't spend money. We try to spend money very wisely and do with what little we can. So this, this is from zero to a hundred. I hope it comes in at forty.
Right. I think we understand that. We're just looking at the numbers for the.
We just don't know. We don't want to handcuff ourselves to the point that, well, what if it's sixty-five and not fifty or forty? So for as, for as tight as we are with the money, I guess it would have to be a little trust in the fact that we're not going to overspend if we can help. Thank you.
And I don't think, it's, it's definitely not a trust issue. I think it's more precision issue. But if, if we're not at a stage where, if we're at a stage where really the, the numbers are imprecise, then I, I understand that.
Yeah, we would like to be as precise as possible for us in any budget issue, you know? This is one that's kind of a gray area. We're not quite exactly sure what kind of studies, what kind of consulting is going to be needed for the project and what those costs are actually going to be. So rather than coming back and we set it at forty or fifty and it comes back to sixty-five, we have to make adjustments there. So.
See, I think our town had the same concerns, especially the ambiguity of it. And I've talked about it, I stopped and it's all. So yeah, we, we have some of those same, same concerns. And when I heard a hundred thousand for a need study or a space study, it seems like a lot of money. I mean, are you going to start building something with that hundred thousand or is it just, again, space and need study? So, you know, we hope that it is much less than that. I don't know what, if it is fifty thousand, then does the fifty thousand roll over into future capital expenditures?
The fifty thousand would be any fund balance money that would be discretion of the, the fire commission to basically use in subsequent budgets or wherever they would want to put it towards, or towards any future development or any, any of that project. So it's, it's still there. It's not like it's being reused, you know, washed away or anything else.
So, yeah, the, the money would be in fund balance. Let's say we didn't spend any of it or only spent ten thousand. It would stay in the fund balance. And then the next year, we would approach the question from fresh again and rebudget the amount we thought was needed. So every year, it starts over and going, rebudget whatever needed there. And there, you know, maybe some overlap with other studies that are being done. So we've heard a little bit about the downtown study, you know, producing projections for future growth and we have currency numbers.
Yeah, certainly that information, but there's not a, a separate carve-out for fire.
For fire, yeah, that's the commission's job, for sure, yeah. But there should be plenty of, of data. So hopefully the consultants will have.
Some stuff would be reusable. Correct. We should have some overlap. Theoretically, you should have some overlap.
Okay, two about just timing, aside from the, the dollar, huh? But is it realistic that it would be a 2025 expense to have to take in 2025 or what is it? I don't know how long a, a need study would take. You know, within the, within 2025, it's done, wrapped up in, with a bow and presented. Or does it extend into 2026 where the accounting for that might not have to happen until 2026? Any idea? I don't know. I don't know how long.
I think it's more likely, Carl, to happen in 2025 than 2026.
Okay.
And my, the way I look at this, I mean, I'll just put it black and white. People don't like it when I talk black and white. But this, this is the reality. There's two things that basically the fire district is looking at to see. If that's going to work on that current property that we have down there or not, that's going to be one of the biggest factors. If, if it works on the property that we have on there, maybe in that, there's twofold on that. Does it mean it stays on the same property or do we extend it? Keeping on the same property is not going to be able to work. We're going to either need to go north or we're going to be able to need to go south. We already know that. We don't need to hire any consultants until we have, either we can go north or we can go south. And then people say, what is it going to look like? It's going to have two floors on it. How much are you reloading it? So you're looking at probably in the seven thousand more square feet than we currently have with the second floor on it, that kind of thing. That's what we're probably looking at, to kind of give you an idea. Keep in that, keep in mind that building is ninety feet deep, just automatically. Well, you know, Arlen, we think about ninety feet or a hundred by a hundred being ten thousand square feet, that kind of thing. You just think about what, what that looks like. And then you, you think about what you have down there and all that other kind of stuff. Here nor there, at the end of the day, we have to know, is it feasible to keep it down there, to make it work at that facility or not? If it goes someplace else, then we probably will have to sit back with the commission and, and our group and basically say, okay, now we're going to have to look at this a little bit different. This scope is going to be, this is not going to work here. We need a, a needs assessment, analysis, and then we'll look at this whole picture, see what's going to happen. Then at that point, it's probably going to be only maybe forty thousand dollars for this needs assessment and everything else. And then it'll come back and then you'll see all of the other consequences that doesn't work on that property and all of the other stuff. It's probably time for Glenn to retire because the numbers will be dramatic. I don't know if I want to go through dramatic, but we'll deal, we'll deal at that time.
Yeah, thank you.
If that makes any sense. Tim?
When will the scope be defined? The scope of the study be defined?
The scope of the, the study for the fire district? Are we talking the downtown?
No, the fire district.
As soon as we, I would say, I would say by July next year, we'll probably have it done.
The study or the scope?
The, I would.
We're going to go to a consultant and say, we need a study that takes into account this scope.
Yep.
When will that?
I would hold by July of next year at our July meeting that we have that in place.
Okay. I think those have to go hand in hand.
Well, then the study begins. And I think that's what begs Carl's question. Will we really be paying for a study if we have a scope defined by July?
I think we will be. I think we will be. Lynn?
So I need to clarify a little bit. I think I'm getting into some muddy water on this. When we talk about a space. on this. When we talk about a space needs analysis, similar to what we did for the senior center, it was agnostic of location. So, it was simply based on usage and space needs for specific events, things like that. It didn't take into account anything geographically about where our current senior center lies. It just told us what was needed. And then we now are applying that to a site plan. Are you, you're indicating that that is the first step of this study would simply be to just look at the fire district regardless of location to say, these are the, this is the amount of space throughout seven thousand square feet. This is the amount of space we need. And then it would dovetail into a discussion about geographic location as to the current facility? Are we, is this one hundred thousand dollar facility planning going to do both of those things?
Probably, probably. And, and, and the thing of it is, like I said this before, and I know people are rolling their eyes or anything above, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, if we do a needs, needs analysis and look at that fire district, then for fifty years, we can make that property work for all of our district partners on that facility. Is there going to be some limitations in some areas? Yeah, there's going to be some things. Because like I've said at other subsequent meetings, in a, in a, in a, a project of this, bringing fire stations together, I told the commission the same thing. We would bring a training facility, all this stuff underneath one location. Phil has heard this and other people. We would do that. There is no way that you can put a training facility and training tower at that current location downtown. So, no matter what we do for a building and how we move forward, I already know, and our team is looking at options about how we can make that part of it work. Fire station, living quarters, operations, kind of centrally located out of that particular building, being able to, be able to run 24/7, be able to take three thousand calls, a couple ambulances, men and women coming, going, probably having staffing around seven to 10 people. We can make that facility work. Where it gets really tight is when you start bringing this other stuff in. If you had a consultant, if we hired a consultant in and bring somebody in from the outside, they would sit me down and say to me, "Fire chief, just start telling the community, you need to build a bigger building. You need to go someplace else. Maybe you have all this stuff." I also know, I have my district partners, I have the three townships, and I have the village of Oregon, that we have to try to balance this thing. If we don't get that property down there, then we start moving, and then there will be some add-ons within reason that we would look at how big a piece of property would have and all that kind of stuff. And that's the reality of it. That's the reality part of it. And I know people don't like to hear that, but that's where it is. Jason?
Yeah, so my, my understanding from, and hello, district members, correct me if I'm wrong, is this is going to be a step-by-step process. And the first step of the process is a building needs analysis. So, that way, we know, and, and conversation with the chief, looking at district space and district needs and growth of the district and what kind of building we need. And then we, step two, we'll look at when step two comes, is my, my understanding. So, so there, there's, there's lots to do, but step one is that space needs analysis, and then we'll go from there.
And can I follow up on that a little bit? So, step one, space needs analysis. Going back to Tim's question too, you think it wouldn't be until midway through 2025 when that begins?
I don't think we've got, I haven't, I missed the last meeting. So, unless I missed something at the last meeting, I don't think we've gotten that deep into the conversation yet.
I would say we don't know. We don't know what the timing on it looks like. We don't know.
Casey, go ahead. Leave that open.
I appreciate that.
So, but my understanding, my thought is, and this is my thought sitting here hearing this, is if we get through step one and it costs fifty thousand dollars, and we have fifty thousand dollars left in the CIP, and we need either a site study or something else, then that money can be rolled over to that next study, which this group would, would approve. So, I think it's all going to be invested in that process and project. We, we just need to have some conversations. And we've been waiting also for the downtown master plan to, planning to happen for the, the fire EMS district who was able to have the, all of the members' conversations with the, the folks who are doing that process because it, it all needs to work together.
Maybe beneficial or helpful for the boards to see just a PowerPoint or a diagram or a timeline or the process. You kind of described it here, but I understand how all this is happening and what, what money's being spent on what portion or what have you. But the scope of work is being brought up, more detailed plan.
I'd just make a comment. And if we're going to do a space needs study for fifty years, as the chief has indicated, that study may indicate that it can go downtown. It may also indicate, I think we all have to acknowledge, that it will not fit downtown anymore. So, you know, to, to send an RFP for a study to say how we could make a fifty-year station fit on a piece of land, I don't think is the way to proceed. I think the way to proceed is, tell us what we need over the next fifty years, then will it fit on this piece of land? So, you know, at, at this time next year, we may be thinking, we're going to have to relocate the station. I think everybody has to have their eyes open. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Also, having been through this process of building a new library, we also did space needs assessment for, for that. And just because it'll say, in the next fifty years, you need this many square feet, it doesn't mean that we can always afford that. Things get scaled back. You have to work within budgets. The price of the building went way up when we were doing it. You know, we're just trying to get a sense for, of outlook for fifty years, and that's what they'll give us. That doesn't mean that we have to build a station that that size. Like, like chief was saying, like, we, we have to work within our means. And so, I, it'll tell us an ideal situation, and then it's up to us to figure out what piece of land to put it on, how big it's actually going to be. You know, maybe we only build out for thirty years or forty or whatever. But that'll, this is just to tell us a forecast. And what we do with that is down the road.
Chief, how old is the current building?
Twenty-three.
So, twenty-three years. So, fifty years might be.
Might be stretching it.
And it's grown largely by the village and probably not in any of the towns or even towns.
Keep in mind, when you, when you put the, that addition on back when, that apparatus bay, that where the majority of the fire trucks sit, it was like eighty years old or whatever. It's the old part of the fire station that was there. So, that part of it wasn't done, that kind of thing. And again, I, there was probably a lot of controversy twenty years ago. I, I can only imagine. I'm sure it was there. It just happens anytime you have fire districts and you have those type of projects. So, I'm sure everybody had to balance things out and, and make it work twenty-three years ago. Rachel?
No tension, yes.
So, yeah, now, right now, money's a little tighter and all those kind of things. So, it just, yeah, so, so maybe it's a thirty-year building. And, and I said this at the Town of Oregon meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I'll say it again here, and we'll continue to drive these, these factors home with my equivalents different places. Our chances of doing any consolidation and mergers or anything, our cooperative efforts going to the north or say, or to the west is probably almost zero. But I think there's still some hope. Looking at east, looking at the corridor towards the Stoughton area, looking at some of our stuff to the south, looking maybe on the Belleville area. Those are opportunities that I still believe, regionalization, larger scale fire EMS districts, operations that basically our, our legislators in the state of Wisconsin are supporting these things, trying to make that happen. And I'll just say, Dane County is a hard county to make these things happen in. It happens other places, but it doesn't seem to happen too frequently in, or in or around Dane County. But we've got a lot of different templates. I've traveled the state before with fire EMS, and we've had successful places that this has worked and have satellite stations and all that. And I, I go back and I look at this vision, and I, I go back to how I did some consulting and some of that stuff. And I look at some different templates that basically, you look at geographic locations and what we have and where growth will be with some of our other operations. The Belvilles, the Brooklands, and Torrance-Stoughton, there's some things there that I think that some cooperative stations, if nothing else, in between some of our municipalities, sharing our men and women, sharing some apparatus purchases, being able to deliver services better for our township partners. Also, you know, we're having another ambulance coming into the village of Oregon when we need it, when our two are gone, that kind of stuff. Those are the future things that you have to have a vision and a temper, a temperature for and a, a forecast for the future. But those things all take time to change culture, to bring other people along, and also continue to work to that. Those are the things that continue, is my drive, to basically try to bring that to this, this area with this group and with our township partners and the village. Because I think that that is the way for the future. I just cannot, you know, maybe ten years ago, I would have said maybe a couple of stations in Oregon, all by the Oregon fire district. But you start looking at this stuff, you're looking at the cost, you're looking at our, our delivery, and that, again, the competition for the men and women in the field, try to bring it and recruit and pay people and retain people and have good quality people be able to respond to these things are getting harder and harder. So, we've just got to do some things a little bit different. And fortunately, the commission gave us the green light to have those discussions. Tim's sitting on a, on a board to the south of us. They agreed. So, we're going to have some future meetings in 2025 that I'm going to actually start taking a look at this and see what we can do and where we go with that. So, if nothing else, just how we can make our operational plans better today than they are, and how we can share men and women, all that kind of stuff. So, there's some, there's some good thoughts. The, the team back there in the back of the room, looking excited about that and see where we go with that. So, those are, there's a lot of, lot of loose ends that we've got to try to bring together and provide leadership and, and talk through all these challenging times in this culture that we're in, if that makes any sense. So, go back to the hundred thousand. I'll just ask the question. So, do we have support that you guys want to move this hundred thousand? You want to cut this back? Does everybody, everybody want to take this hundred thousand back? You know, I think, I'd like to see some, something to be resolved and move forward. And if we, we need some extra money, then we look at the fund balance, and the, the commission would have to approve it out of fund balance. How would you like to proceed forward? So, we can step in there. Yes?
I, I guess I would speak in favor of leaving it at the hundred thousand. I liken it, this is a capital expenditure, similar to buying a piece of equipment. And yes, we go out and say, we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars, but they find something for fifty thousand dollars. You don't spend the extra fifty thousand dollars on something else. We anticipate that they will do their best to negotiate an appropriate price. But I want, I don't want to get in a situation where we cut that back to, say, fifty thousand dollars, and they find an opportunity at fifty-five, and then they've got to go through a whole series of amending their budget. I guess this is just giving them the latitude to find an appropriate service in an appropriate range. So, I would support leaving it in.
Yes?
I was just going to reiterate your comment. I would support leaving it in. However, I, I do, I, Jason, I felt like you did a nice job of explaining step one versus step two. I would like this to stay in step one of simply a space needs analysis as opposed to a site analysis, only due to the fact that we have the downtown master plan and some other forces that might change that discussion before that even begins in the fire district. And so, having that space analysis first, I think is the scope, as you were mentioning before, is the scope I would want to see there.
And I think that's where the uncertainty really comes from, the angst about a six-figure plug figure when we don't have a clear understanding scope. Scope creep can spend a hundred grand. It can. And if we're not clear on what the scope is, then we are really not clear on what the expense is. And so, I, I agree. Tom, I absolutely agree. We want to make sure we give them the latitude to get done what we want to get done. But I want to know what we want to get done. I want to be clear about that.
My, my understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because half the time I'm taking minutes too, is the fire EMS district as a group, we've only approved the space needs analysis. And so, that's all we've approved. That's all this money can be used for without further approvals. In my, now, now this is Jason talking, not what we've decided as a commission. In terms of, in my mind, there's no point in talking about step two or even thinking about it until you're through step one, because we don't know what's going to come out of step one. And so, so there's going to be decisions that need to be made. I'm, it'd be nice if it could be done in 2025, and we could come back to this group and say, hey, look, this thing only cost twenty thousand dollars, and this is what we see for step two. But, but we'll, we'll have to see. But I also, as the chief talked about, does a fantastic job of watching nickels and dimes very well and makes one penny five a man. So, I'm expecting the same, same here.
It's getting harder to split those pennies.
I just wanted to add, a lot of the comments coming from the townships, I think, are ultimately about accountability. And I think what you're looking for is a level of accountability around the plan with this consultant that we're just not ready for. The fact that we're not ready to answer those questions does not mean that we don't hold ourselves accountable to everybody in this room to put together a good plan and spend your money wisely. And absolutely, that's my commitment, and I believe the commitment of the whole commission, that we will spend this money wisely and check back in and keep you updated. And if that means creating, you know, some PowerPoints or whatever about the definition of the scope and the plans and exactly where they stand, we will build them. Because this sort of grew out of the last forty-five to sixty days. We're not ready with that tonight. But that doesn't mean we don't expect to be accountable to everybody in the commission in terms of what we plan to do to spend this money. So, that's my personal commitment. And I think I'm speaking for everybody on the commission when I say that.
So, I guess I'm, I have a question for the group then. Would it make more sense to just change this from future facility planning to space needs analysis to make it very clear that that's what this money is for? And then any extra could be, would go into a fund, and we could use it for the site analysis someday or whatever. But is that, is that the hangup? That it's too?
I, I don't, I don't think what it's called is the hangup. I, I don't.
Sorry, yeah.
I, I don't. I'm in. But thank you for offering that up. The town of Oregon is looking at a five percent increase in our budget just due to the fire commission, fire and EMS commission increase in our funding. That is before we spend money on anything else. We don't have growth in the town. We don't have commercial in the town. And so, we are just looking at more expense, a lot more expense, thirty-two percent more expense in this category alone. And so, we're anxious about going back to our constituents and saying, here's why the bill went up this year. And we want to be able to tell them, we've asked those questions and here are the answers. So, we do have a lot of questions because we're choking on the increase that we're experiencing. So, it is selfish of us. I totally understand that. But we are going to be asked. We already are being asked. So.
Very, very important. A lot of variables, a lot of things to consider here, very important issues that revolve around a, a fire district. It comes down to say, I think everybody can agree that that's number one. We have to have a fire district that can respond to all the communities. And response times are incredibly important. Those are all things that have to be considered, I think, first and foremost. Those are all things that have to be considered, I think, first and foremost. As far as the 50-year plan, that's the first I, our discussions, when we have discussions with the Commission regarding this have always been more 30-year, looking forward 30 years, not 50 years. Sure, well, we'd like to have the ultimate facility, and you brought those points, it's great points. Of course, we all would, you know. We have to be fiscally responsible in our own communities, in our constituents, of course we do. So these are very important elements to this, this group and how we move forward here. I think to define our next moves here are also very important, that everybody's up to speed, everybody's clear on the scope of this project and where it's headed and where are we right now. So I think a timeline presentation is due. I think some of the Commission will be working on. And to get that, get that out to everybody so everybody knows where we're at. And that way we can take feedback from you folks also as this project continues.
I just have a question on the increase. So the district is camping at 5.2%, right? So the increase from last year will be CPI plus 2%. So 5.2% overall increase for the district's budget rate. So is the Town of Oregon then going to have a smaller increase than you were projecting?
I'll defer to by, I'll defer to general.
So they're camping the increase in the district at 5.2%. What do you mean? So how much is the increase for your, for your town over last year?
$60,000.
You can look at my budget.
Nice guys on numbers, all right, let's go. And go up $60,000.
You have to look at our capital, 31.75%. It's $10,000. The increase if you take the capital and the.
And add them together.
Capital and operating, all right.
$10,000.
All right.
It's, yeah.
It sounds like a good number.
It's, yeah. But it's, the equity goes up, the capital goes down.
How it fluctuates.
Okay. Can we go to that?
No.
Okay, well, we're on B, our draft for 2025 budget. Any more questions on that?
Can I ask the question?
Yes.
So if there was a new station, the year that you would be planning the station? Is there a year that your station is?
I think it's in our capital plan for 2027. But as things are probably, it'll probably be more like 2028, but it's, I think it's in 2027 as I recall, correct? Yep. 2027, Commission, yeah. Correct.
Whether it's in the current location or a new location, that could be the year.
Correct.
Okay.
And, I mean, I'll just be realistic, I don't see, if it's, if it's not a add-on to that fire station at that current location, take it and move it someplace else, you're probably looking at, I'm just guessing. You've got to look at property, you've got to do all these other things that go part of it, you're probably looking at more like 2030. I'm just going to be realistic. Things are just not going to come together if it goes to a different property. Concur? No?
I think that's, that's, I think if we determine that it needs to be on a different property and we're diligent about it, it could be sooner than that. But, I mean, I think that's a worst-case scenario.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a couple of years out. I mean, it's just, it is what it is, so.
Chief, can we answer your question though to this board? You had asked, is there support? And I, I've heard from a couple.
I think there's, I think there's some support. I don't really know, and I.
Do you need more information? Do you need to?
Well, at some point, this group needs to come together and tell, so we all agree so that Lisa can put this back on paper and whatever you want to agree to tonight, so we can move together so that you can take this stuff back and make it work.
Because you can't start writing the RFP until you know what the budget is, correct? So every time we delay, it's delayed. Isn't that, not correct?
That's pretty much, there's a, yeah, there's just a lot of loose ends that just need to be kind of like fixed before you can just, you know, throw carts in front of horses and all this other kind of stuff.
Would you like to ask all the, one at a time, all the different municipalities in this Commission whether there's support? Is that what you, a roll call kind of thing? Just so we know? Because that way, if we're all in support, we can actually start writing this RFP and maybe getting things done in 2025. I would suggest that, I guess. Find out.
So I get a wording correctly, support of?
Of the, up to $100,000.
Okay.
For the step one space needs analysis.
Okay.
So this is basically feedback because you're going to be putting, the budget is going to be getting approved? Or your budget is already approved?
The Commission approved the budget, I mean, a draft budget in July.
Okay.
So then basically, other than what, only thing that was changed from that budget is basically the 5.2% because of the CPI numbers came out. So levying the max is what I understood from a couple of weeks ago at that meeting, was consensus of this group. I then told Finance to make sure that that was accordingly. They sent those numbers out, that's where it is. The $100,000 is in there from July, when the Commission asked to put the $100,000 in on top of our draft that was there originally. So that's where it currently is. And just tell me where you want to go.
Jeff, would you like a motion? Sure. I would make Kent Knudsen, Todd Rutland, I would make a motion to accept the future facility planning budget of $100,000, which would be limited to the needs analysis portion of the process that we need to go through. And in that motion, I would like to have each township vote as a township and see how it flies.
Okay, would each township do a roll call or?
We could take a one-minute discussion between ourselves.
Shall, shall we do that?
And I could, each of us chairs could give you a vote as to how the township votes.
Shall we do that?
I think we should get a second on the motion, though.
Okay. You have a motion and a second?
So it's a procedural motion is what you're seeing, doing right now or?
Yes.
Talking about the final motion.
Good question. I don't know yet.
Well, it was, it was worded as a final motion.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Discussion.
And second, and then a discussion.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we have a second, now it'd be discussion.
Okay, so now we'll take the.
Everybody take a minute or two.
Curfew.
That's kind of what I. That's finding it a little weird for an announcement.
Well, I went.
Okay, so as this particular discussion inside the Monday is on the agenda this evening, we can't take any action. Okay. On this, what we can do is we can, as we've had discussions, we can let it be known we're, we're standing on this this evening and, and accept that feedback. We have consensus, great. We don't, then so be it and duly noted. So I guess we'll start with the Town of Oregon.
Yeah, I think we discussed it, and again, because it's not shown on the agenda as an actionable item on tonight's agenda.
It is.
We're providing.
It is actionable.
Go under 4A business.
But are we approving the budget or are we providing you information or feedback on your, your budget?
Well, you're amending the budget, essentially. No, the budget that, excuse me. Budget as it stands is, is $100,000. And that's what we are putting on right now. So it's part of the budget, thus it's, it is actionable.
Well, I guess we might provide you feedback, we're okay with $100,000.
Okay, Town of Oregon.
Town of Oregon is also in favor of $100,000, of $200,000.
Todd Rutland?
Todd Rutland is also in favor from $0 to $100,000.
And Village of Oregon?
Village of Oregon is also in favor of $200,000.
You have the taxes.
Source.
Good, we move on.
Source. I'm max.
Okay, so again, item B was we drew up the toy certified district budget and capital improvement plan. Have we done that? Are there any questions? Are you either of those? Again, from my perspective, and don't make this wrong, I think that we have, again, capital-wise, ambulance, $100,000 for that project, $20,000 for that, for that fire station for any updates inside. That's, yeah, nothing else. So I believe we haven't addressed that. Okay.
Great.
There was a question about the, the fund balance and its relationship to the $100,000. Did someone want to speak to that? Arlen was answering your question.
Yeah, that was a question. It's, is the source of the funding, that 100, 120,000, coming from the fund balance?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. As long as it's on the record. Okay. And yes. Okay, here and done, we will move on to item 4C, updates on future fire station rolling project. I don't know what I want to say. I don't want to say the wrong thing to, like, anybody, like. Does anybody have any questions on it?
There you go.
I'll, I'll take the safe way out. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Excellent, so beautiful, thank you. Won't say another thing. And as I said before, you know, we do, the Commission will be working on a timeline presentation and a document. Anything else on that? Okay, here and done. Item five on the agenda, announcements, 2025 joint member meetings planned for Wednesday, July 30th, 2025, and Wednesday, September 24th, at 25:00, 6:30 PM, right here. We have decided to kind of get the dates out well in advance so we don't have any other conflicts of interest with dates a year from now. Okay, that brings us to, so general of all words.
Second?
Second.
Our favor is. Town of Oregon has to, anything else? Without objection, both there.
Rutland?
A motion to adjourn, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And we'll move to Village of Oregon.
Sorry?
Let's move.
Without objections, Village of Oregon.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.